This is Monday, July 21st. We are at a regular meeting of the City Council in the city of Waverly in the great state of Iowa, and we are called to order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you're at home keeping score, we are light on this end of the table. Councilperson Myers and councilperson Bergen are both out of town, but have no fear, councilperson Jones can take care of that side of the table. No worries.
No worries.
Your city clerk has provided for you an agenda. I would welcome a motion to approve.
Move approve of the agenda as presented.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? I hear none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously and gives us a chance to say welcome back to Jacob Farron. It's great to have you back, sir. I hope you're enjoying this as much as we're enjoying having you.
Absolutely.
The city clerk has prepared for you a set of minutes, and they are presented to you. Can I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the July 7, 2025 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I hear none. This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously. We're on to item E. This is public hearings. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing for review of the alley reconstruction 2025 project plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost. The mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. Madam Clerk, have you received any written or oral comments?
I have not, your honor.
Would anyone wish to rise to speak to the reconstruction project? I see no one. This public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 25-97, a resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated total cost for the alley reconstruction 2025 project.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Alrighty, this is a roll call vote. Carla, could you read the roll?
Drinkow.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kengas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
That passed unanimously.
Now on to something a little more complicated, Resolution 2598. This is a resolution awarding the alley reconstruction project 2025 project to Baker Enterprises Incorporated of Waverly, Iowa, for the amount of $57,466. Is there a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 25-98, a resolution awarding the alley reconstruction 2025 project to Baker Enterprises, Inc. of Waverly, Iowa, for the amount of $57,466.
Second.
Any discussion? Alright, we're on 1A. This is also a roll call vote.
Jones.
Yes.
Kengas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to 1B. Now we're at Resolution 2599, a resolution approving the contract, bond, and certificate of insurance from Baker Enterprises Incorporated of Waverly, Iowa, for the alley reconstruction 2025 project, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Do I have a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 25-99, a resolution approving contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance from Baker Enterprises Incorporated of Waverly, Iowa, for the alley reconstruction 2025 project, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
Second. We'll give that to Jones, because he has to take that whole side by himself. Alrighty, any discussion? I hear none. This too is a roll call vote.
Kengas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
That passed unanimously. Counsel, I'd now like to recommend to you a proclamation. This is a joint proclamation that is being made by Mayor Hart of Waterloo, Mayor Laudeck of Cedar Falls, and myself. Whereas, the orchestral arts have long been a cornerstone of Cedar Valley's cultural, educational, and artistic life, and whereas the Waterloo-Cedar Falls Symphony, the Northern Iowa Symphony Orchestra, and the Woodbury Community Symphony are exemplary organizations that inspire, educate, and uplift through live music, and whereas these orchestras bring together musicians and audiences of all ages and backgrounds, fostering connection, creativity, and shared civic pride, and whereas their collaborations with area schools, universities, and nonprofit partners make the arts more accessible and encourage the next generation of musicians and art advocates, and whereas September marks the beginning of the orchestra concert season and presents a timely opportunity to recognize their value and contributions. Now therefore, we, the undersigned mayors of Waterloo, Cedar Falls, and Waverly, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as Cedar Valley Orchestra Month, in honor of the orchestras that enrich the cultural fabric of our region and serve as a unifying force for our communities. We encourage all residents to celebrate and support these musical institutions throughout the month and beyond. A witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hands and cause the seal of our respective cities to be affixed this 13th day of September 2025. Can I have a motion to approve this proclamation?
Move approval. The proclamation is read by the mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
We're up for discussion. In celebration of this, the Waterloo Orchestra is going to come and present a free concert in Waverly, down at Coleman Park, at the end of August, and your mayor is going to conduct one song that they know.
Are they going to tell you in advance?
Starspecle Banner.
Oh, God.
Yeah. And in the season, they're going to play the second Harry Potter movie, but the music has been removed from the film, and then the orchestra will play during the movie.
That's cool.
I think that'll be really cool. Any other discussion, orchestras? That is a voice vote. For the proclamation, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously. Now we move on to item G, presentation of certificates. The council recognizes Karen Layman for her 17 and some years of service on the Waverly Historic Preservation Commission. Karen, are you here?
I didn't see her.
Oh, I didn't see her.
Oh, that's too bad. Well, we thank Mrs. Layman for her service, and we'll present her with a certificate suitable for framing, not framed, but suitable for framing, in the immediate future. Item two, the council recognizes the Waverly Human Equity and Diversity Commission members, that are Amy Kengas, Linda Ebbkemeyer, Stephanie Ross, Andy Hansen, Ashley Smiley, Shaw Rota, and Libby Frye, for their service on the commission. Would you folks come up and let me present you with these certificates? Amy. Linda.
Jesus Christ.
Stephanie.
Where are you?
Andy. Ashley. Shaw. Libby. Thank you all members for your service. Thank you. Just in the last few months, I approached this group and talked to, we talked about the epidemic of loneliness, and they did a fabulous job of arranging for neighborhood block parties, working with our library. Really proud of that work they did. And they were going to have a talent show this summer that unfortunately couldn't happen because of legislation, but Waverly does have a lot of talent, and it would have been a really good show. And of course, the pride float went off beautifully. I understand, Ms. Hansen, Mr. Hansen, you have something to say?
Yes. Just a couple of minutes. You know who I am. I've been here before, telling you how grateful we are for your support. So on behalf of the commission, thank you. Thanks for the certificates this evening, but also mostly want to say thanks for your support over the years. We have all talked amongst ourselves and at our last meeting about how proud of the work we are. I think we were just hitting our stride there towards the end. So with an uncertain future, it's hard, a little bittersweet, to be here tonight. But at the same time, I think events like our pride event, if you were able to attend or you were able to, like, hear some of the community reaction to it, it's a testament to how much those events matter and how much matters that the work continues. So we are hopeful that we're still able to contribute and still looking for the support of people like yourselves to help continue the work. So, thank you, and appreciate your support of yours.
Thank you, Andy. Current legislation. Current legislation complicates having a commission, but a human equity and diversity club might be very much welcome in this town. So thank you all very much. Item H, we are now on public comments. If anyone would like to come and speak, making comments on items that are not on the agenda, now is the time. Does anyone rise to speak? Would you please identify yourself and limit yourself to five minutes. Speak only to the council.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Carl Roxberg, and I live at 303 South Ridge Drive. That's in the Heinz Second Edition. And I had some concerns that I wanted to bring to the council, wondering if, in fact, the decision is made as to where the city sewer and water will be coming in to that And another concern I had that, back in the, in the Heinz Second Edition, when that was opened, it was my understanding, when we bought, we've been here in Waverly since 93, that all the plumbing and et cetera was done at that time, because there are seven of our houses that all operate off the single well, and all the plumbing that was put in was up to specs at that time. And I was wondering if it would be feasible to, when the water lines come in, to just hook into that well, since the infrastructure already appears to be there, at least at this point in time, I'm aware of. And then I had some concerns that, on the, there's been a number kicked around of like 25,000 assessment for a 10-year period, and I believe at 5%. And I was wondering, is something like that put onto the tax rule that you would get the special assessment twice a year at the, when the property taxes are due, like in March and September? I guess that was one concern that I had. And then, on the letter that came out on June 7, June 9, excuse me, there was concerns about, there were 22 well water testing, 22 properties, and I was concerned, was that in the neighborhood of the Heinz Edition, both first and second edition? And another question, I guess I had the concern about the nitrate level, which are always high in the spring and summer, and I'm sure the council, or at least whoever is spearheading things or working through this, I'm sure they've looked into Dr. Fossett's work on soil type and council rates, and, excuse me, and cancer rates throughout the state. You know, it's strictly a bell curve that goes up and down with the highest rates, and this was probably done at least 30 years ago, I bet, and all tied to like the Clarion, Clarion Webster soil types, and as you came down on each side, clear down to the lower area, or the low area in the state toward the Missouri border, why they fell substantially. And of course, you've got different soil types throughout, throughout the state. And those were some, a couple of three concerns that I had, and I don't know if I would address these specifically at another date to a certain member on the council, or to whom could you direct me to?
Yeah, thank you. And we here and appreciate your concerns. You understand, because it's not on the agenda, we can't debate or interact with you.
Okay.
But Justin, right over there, he knows everything about this, and he can answer all of your questions.
Okay.
And if not, James is right here.
Okay.
Okay? So we can get you those answers.
Alright, thank you very much. I'll try to be in contact to set up a.
Yeah. That'd be great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to address the council tonight? I see no one rising, so we'll move on to item I, the consent calendar. Can I have a motion?
I move approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
I had a question on the special permit for the Bremer Brewery.
Yeah.
The date, it's, the insurance is effective and canceled on the same date? How does that work?
It's still a one-day event, isn't it?
If I may.
Yeah, please.
Okay. So yes, that is just a one-day event. So basically what they're doing is, that's part of their current DRAM insurance, and that doesn't expire until later that month or September. But it's right in that timeframe, and they'll be renewing their annual license soon after. It may be August 4th that it's coming to council. So, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Consent calendar. Any other discussion? You appear ready to vote. This will be a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously, taking us on to item J. We're now on regular business. This is the third and final reading of ordinance 1169 and ordinance vacating the public right-of-way located adjacent to the intersection of 16th Avenue Southwest and 8th Street Southwest. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the third and final reading of ordinance 1169 and ordinance vacating the public right-of-way located adjacent to the intersection of 16th Avenue Southwest and 8th Street Southwest.
Second.
Any discussion? Third time through. Let's have a roll call vote, Carla.
Rothie.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kengas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
That passed unanimously. Resolution 25-100, a resolution approving plat of survey for parcel GG in the Waverly Industrial Plaza. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 25-100, a resolution approving plat and survey for parcel GG in the Waverly Industrial Plaza for prime development to use for development.
Second.
Any discussion? Not exactly our first time looking at this either.
Yeah.
Alright, you appear ready to vote, Carla.
Wolf.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kengas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to item three. Then this now is Resolution 25-101, a resolution approving a plat of survey for parcel LL, which is located at 933 16th Street, Southwest, Waverly, Iowa. May I have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 25-101, a resolution approving plat of survey for parcel LL located at 933 16th Street, Southwest, Waverly, Iowa, at the request of CUSB Bank.
Second.
Any discussion?
So we don't really know how they're going to divide it up at this point.
I couldn't figure that out.
It was sort of difficult to tell. I do not have it plotted, but I think it will be the frontage parcel, which would make the most sense. I'm trying to remember, I know we discussed it in development team, so we put it on, but I think it's going to be that frontage area. As you see, all the other buildings that belong, piece by piece, that, I think, is the one they're probably going to cut in half and have that as frontage property for someone to build on.
You mean next to the?
Yes.
To the east.
How about behind them, to the north?
They very well could keep that. I don't know that that's going to be broken into two separate, where you'd have that configured in here, so I think it's just the one. But we can certainly follow up and get that back to you as well.
I mean, I'm not opposed to doing it, I just was surprised there wasn't more detail. Usually, you know, we see some detail, but.
Yeah. I know P and Z was unanimous on it, and it discussed it at length, I just did not have the minutes from that.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, item three is on the table, 25-101. Any more discussion? Take it away, Carla.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kengas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to number four. This is Resolution 25-102, a resolution accepting the water pollution control sludge storage tank maintenance project as complete, and approve final payment to Great Plains Structures, LLC, Vandis Heights, Minnesota. Can I have a motion?
Move approval of Resolution 25-102, a resolution accepting the water pollution control, WPC, sludge storage tank maintenance project is complete, and approve final payment to Great Plains Structures, LLC, Vandis Heights, Minnesota, for $118,771, plus the 10% down payment of $11,877.10.
Second.
Any discussion?
Did this part of the project go smoothly?
No, this was a separate from the project.
Okay. But it went smoothly, and you're happy with it?
Yes, yes, it was much needed.
Good.
Any other discussion? Okay. Carla?
Jones.
Yes.
Kengas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
That passed unanimously, taking us to number five, Resolution 25-103, a resolution approving the purchase of a 2025 Chevrolet Silverado 1500 from McGrath Chevrolet of Dubuque, Iowa. Can I have a motion?
I move approval of Resolution 25-103, a resolution approving purchase of a 2025 Chevrolet Silverado 1500 from McGrath Chevrolet of Dubuque, Iowa, for the total purchase price of $41,358. Second.
Thank you. We're on the table. Any discussion? Okay. I guess we're ready to vote, Carla.
Kengas.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
That passed unanimously. So let's move on to Resolution 25-61, a resolution amending the design services contract with Bolton Mink Incorporated for the city-owned building located at 117 First Street Northeast, as amended since the 4/21/25 city council meeting. Can I have a motion?
I move, go ahead.
I move to approve Resolution 25-61, a resolution amending the design services contract with Bolton Mink Incorporated for the city-owned building located at 117 First Street Northeast to provide additional investigation of the site upstream and downstream of the hydroelectric portion of the building to determine what riverfront amenities are possible for the total not-to-exceed amount of $259,800, as amended since the 4/21/2025 city council meeting.
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
I was not exactly sure what the visualization, the $16,500, is that like a fly-through kind of thing, or, you know, I know you're the engineer, not the architect.
Yeah, we could just have some background on the whole thing, yeah.
If you introduce yourself and.
Yes, my name is Adrian Olms. I'm with Bolton and Mink Engineers. It's not really a fly-through, wouldn't be an animation, it would be more just a few visual images, probably from like a bird's eye perspective of the site.
Okay. And that would be, I mean, when I see optional, and I hear again, I apologize, because I'm probably asking the wrong person, but when I see something listed as an optional task, it means we can do it or not do it, and it won't affect the final, the final project. It's just something that is helpful for us to see as part of the project, to visualize.
That's correct.
Okay.
So I think it'd be nice to just have sort of an update and some background on why we're looking at this again.
Yeah, so, I think it's just, we presented a proposal, I think, you know, back in April, that was, also included our architect, subconsultant, or, actually, we were a subconsultant at that time to the architect, and had moved forward kind of with some building improvements, and then, you know, for the main part of the building, and then also the design of the repairs to the turbine building. And since then, you know, for the feedback receipt from council, we went back and revised this to basically focus on the structural engineering services and what improvements were needed to stabilize that portion of the building and really kind of eliminate the other things. The other thing we did in this proposal is we kind of took it step by step, so we included the flow chart at the end, so it kind of shows you where you've got the outs, so to speak. So if we get to a point where the, either the permitting, you know, becomes challenging, or the costs get, you know, out of line with what we had earlier estimated, then the council has decision points where they can, they can decide if they want to proceed with the project.
I know this is a question you probably can't answer, or at least it's legitimately directed to you, but I'm not sure you can answer it. Is there any kind of timeline that you have in mind before a presentation comes back to the council?
Yeah, I think we included here, there's a, just kind of a brief overarching timeline. It's right here, I think it was six months for design phase services, design phase one services, so that's kind of the polymer design and hydraulic modeling, just kind of the initial step of making sure that, or just, you know, doing some analysis to see, you know, if the proposed structures that we're looking at would create a rise in the flood height, and then also kind of a cursory review of environmental concerns. So probably about six months to that, to that first one.
Okay, so like in December, January, somewhere along those lines.
Yeah, I would think, before the end of the year, yeah.
Alright.
Anytime we get in the water, you're dealing with a lot of entities, not all of which are urgently moving for you, so.
Right.
It takes time. When you deal with the Corps of Engineers, the DNR, I mean, ship oh, it takes time.
Yeah.
And we're not the only project underway for those guys, so it will take a bit just to get responses, to get things submitted, resubmitted, submitted again after they've lost it, submit it a fourth time, because that seems to be the way it goes lately, is they can't seem to hold on to documentation very well, so, sorry, it's a little cynical. It's been a rough ride with some of those organizations, trying to get them to move forward, and we resubmit how many times, same documentation over and over, to somebody different, because somebody's moved on and so forth. So it does take quite a while to get through some of this, just because the entities we're getting official approval from. But I like the way you heard them, they broke it out in the first phase. If that isn't all the way through and complete, we probably don't move forward. It's up to you. Second phase would be after we've discussed it, if you want to move forward and everything comes back clean, and so it steps it out to where you're not committing all that funding no matter what. It's only a portion, then a portion, then the final if we go, but it'll all depend on what we kind of see.
Yeah, I appreciate the efforts to go back and sort of phase it for us, and give us those.
Of course.
Decision points. Appreciate that.
Yeah, to James's point, I think unfortunately my experience is exactly what you described with the. with the permitting agencies, you know, especially when you're asking them to review a preliminary plan, they don't put the urgency towards it necessarily that they would have a final permit either. And so we might have some drawings and some cost estimates, that sort of thing to share, but it kind of depends on when you want to see the next, you know, the first product, if it's at that level, or if you want to wait till we have, you know, some more read from permitting agencies as well. Our work we can control, we can't control necessarily all the agencies.
Well, I'm okay with this, as long as the council ultimately gives the yes or no on phase two. As long as we get to vote on proceeding, then I'm okay with passing this.
Yep, because it states if it need to be done in writing, nothing in writing comes out of your enterprise like this unless it's come before and positively voted on by all of you, so you are 100% correct. We would not give authorization until you have voted and certified accordingly.
Any other questions, any other discussion? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You appear ready to vote, Carla.
Rafi.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
That passed unanimously, they're taking us to number seven. We're now in Resolution 25-104, a resolution setting a bid letting date and setting a public hearing to review and approve the 5th Avenue Northwest, Carstensen Drive, Main Loop project plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution 25-104, a resolution setting bid letting date for August 5, 2025, and setting August 18, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the council, city council chambers as the date, time, and place for a public hearing for the 5th Avenue Northwest and Carstensen Drive Main Loop project plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost.
Second.
Thank you. We're up for discussion.
Sounds like fun.
Okay. Carla? Let's have a roll call vote.
Wolf.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
That passed unanimously. That brings us to item eight, the cancellation of the July 28, 2025 study session meeting. As I understand it, that was originally to have a study session to receive reports from chamber and from the library.
That's correct.
Chamber can't be here, and we don't want to bring you all in for a 15-minute report from the library. So, and we can move that to another date.
They could read a book.
They could read us a book. Yes.
Toasted way, or...
They could also play cards, I mean, it'd be...
What, they've got games?
Puzzles.
They could do a puzzle. No, I'm okay with moving to approve the cancellation of the study session.
Okay, that's a motion.
Second.
We're up for discussion.
Sounds like fun, let's cancel. We're discussing fun.
Did you know that they have a thing where kids go over to Eisnach Village and play cards with residents?
Yeah.
What a, what a great idea. Intergenerational, entertaining. They do some really great stuff over there.
They do.
All right, I don't see any other discussion, this is a voice vote. So canceling the next meeting, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously. Friends, you have in front of you reports from the Airport Commission, the Housing Commission, and you have your monthly financial report. Do I have any questions or discussion on those? I see none. James, how's your staff doing? We're going to find out.
Quick heads up, just received approved permits from the Iowa DOT to start the process for moving the traffic signals we talked about. That'll happen hopefully within, towards the end of the month. We've got to do some public notifications, we'll get those out here in the next couple days and then start that process.
That's good news.
All right, good progress on the demolition of the pool. Bathhouse came down last week, so now it's just a flat area over there. Yeah, be sure to swing by and take a look at it. I had the pleasure today of sitting with the mayor and Sergeant Hansel and Grant from the sewer treatment plant. We got to sit and have lunch with a group of 10 and 11-year-olds and talk about what we did for the city. And great questions, some were very fun and funny, some were very serious and well thought out, and it was just, it was a really good time. So hopefully they learned a lot, hopefully recruited some lifeguards in the next four, five years. So, we'll see. And then, just a side note, the trail is officially open now, so the bridges are complete.
Awesome, great. That's all we have tonight, sir.
Thank you. That takes us to city council comments. Councilperson Jones.
Nothing.
Councilperson Kangas.
Just a lot of stuff going around. I was noting that the bathhouse was down in the pool, and the bridge is coming along. Hopefully we can catch up a little bit on some of that.
First Stone Park is done, trail is done.
First Stone Park is done, yeah. Fair getting ready to go and kick things off. So we're just moving along in summer here.
Yeah, we are. Councilperson Drago.
Nothing tonight.
Councilperson Rafi.
I want to thank everybody who helped out with Heritage Days. City staff was really helpful, moving picnic tables over there, helping with, with, gosh, I don't even know all the stuff they do, garbage cans, et cetera. Appreciate police department's support, the Bremer County Emergency Services coordinator was there, because, you know, they never know about the weather, so it was really nice to have him there. All the corporate sponsors, the volunteers, it was a good event, came off very well. We missed you, Pete, working security, but it's okay. So just want to thank everybody who helped out.
Councilperson Wolf.
Nothing tonight.
Our guest councilperson, your last chance for public comments. Here you go.
Thank you for inviting me to this. This was a pleasure to get involved here, to see how the city council works, and look forward, look forward to being part of the Board of Adjustments going forward. And again, I just want to express my gratitude for being able to be part of this.
I wasn't kidding about all the prep work before the meeting, was I?
Absolutely.
Mayor's comments. Noting Mrs. Layman's 17 years of volunteering and the Human Equity Commission and all the hours they've spent on this. All the people have volunteered to make Heritage Days work, the volunteers, mostly from Heritage to staff the display here that was on Sunday, the Bentham Display. The children over at church made cupcakes for the city employees to show their appreciation. And we're going to have a mess of volunteers for the Bremer County Fair. There are so many people that do so many things just to make their town a little bit better. You know, if every citizen would just put in an hour a year to just help a little bit, that'd be 10,300 hours. It's just, I am so personally grateful for people that stand up and volunteer, and it's just great. That's what makes our city really good, and that is the example, the epitome really, of being Waverly kind. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? City council is adjourned. See you in two weeks.